February 25th, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Ms. Beth McCall, can you give us our motto?
Absolutely. We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student's success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, we provide for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
This is Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you again this evening. And as you would testify, not every day is easy, but every day we are blessed. And I could not be more blessed or more fortunate to be in a position where I get to meet and work with some of our most outstanding educators. And today I have with me Ewan Hunter, who is Marion County's newest Teacher of the Year, and Elizabeth Rocky, our Rookie Teacher of the Year. And these two educators represent all of Marion County public schools. They represent each teacher we have in our 52 schools and our countless classrooms. I'm going to begin by introducing Mr. Hunter, and I know that you talked with Mr. Hunter a little bit at your last school board meeting, so you're a little familiar with him, as well as many of you met him at our Golden Apple Gala. But for those that don't know, Ewan Hunter is Marion County's 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year and will represent Marion County at the state level. Ewan teaches IB chemistry at Vanguard High School. He has been teaching for 16 years, four of them fortunately with us here in Marion County. He holds a bachelor's degree in chemistry, a postgraduate certificate in education, and a master's degree in leadership and management in education. During his four years with us here in Marion County, he's done too many things to mention, but he has led an initiative to create a new countywide chemistry curriculum to benefit all learners. He has written over 20 grants and brought in almost $100,000 in grant funding. He has created 40 hours of study videos for his students and others, and he has taken Vanguard's IB chemistry pass rate from 64% in 2017 to 89% in 2019. So I got to know Mr. Hunter because it wasn't very long before he started writing grants for Great Ideas and came to me and seeking other grant opportunities. And if, one thing I learned from Mr. Hunter is that chemistry without practical application is practically useless. And so in that vein, he has his students out and about doing chemistry on-site at various places. One of those sites is our own Silver River Museum and using the Silver River. And at the end of last year, Mr. Hunter came to me and said that it would be so much more beneficial for his students if he were able to have the equipment and the probes that they use kept at the Silver River Museum. And he asked if we could write grants for that, and I said, sure, you know, we can do that. And he said, but this won't just be for my students at Vanguard, this will be for every secondary science teacher and their students. And so I'm proud to say that this year, with the help of district staff, Tia Brown and Ken McAtier, we have been piloting that with one teacher at Lake Weir High School, a teacher at Forest High School, they've been writing lesson plans. And I was out there with them last week as they took their first classes out to the Silver River, and it was truly, truly amazing. So it is my great honor to introduce you to Marion County's Teacher of the Year, Ewan Hunter.
So, long time no see, isn't it? Mr. Cummings, I was going to take your feedback and get my lab coat on since you said I looked out of place.
Exactly.
So I'm sorry, I forgot that again. So I was thinking about inspiration, and I thought, you know, it's everywhere, or it is for me, and you can even Google inspiration, and you bring up all these quotes. And one quote that really sticks with me is that President Kennedy's moon speech. And I remember the first time I heard it, it was on this new-fangled technology, the CD-ROM, and there was like an encyclopedia on it, I think it was called Encarta. And it was so cool to actually be able to not only read the quote, but actually see him deliver it. And that resonated with me for a long time, to the extent that I start all my classes in August by paraphrasing that speech. I say, "We choose to do chemistry not because it is easy, but because it is hard." And, you know, so chemistry is my inspiration. I mean, I've got to try and get them, motivate them to learn chemistry, and to do that, you know, I've got to try and convince them that what we're going to do in this lesson is the coolest, smelliest, hottest thing they've ever seen in their entire life, or at least that period. And chemistry gives me that inspiration, it has those applications. I guess the thing about Kennedy's other famous quote, but if you turn that around for chemistry, you say, "Don't ask what you can do for chemistry, ask what chemistry can do for us." The applications of chemistry affect all of our lives. But I have this kind of other niggling thing that gets at me. You know, it was nice of Mrs. Zanetti to talk about the success that IB chemistry students have had, but it's still not 100%. I think I could get better with this. And I think of, you know, that moon speech again, he said, you know, "Let's get there by the end of the decade, set a target, set a goal." So I think maybe we can get every kid to be successful, maybe not just in chemistry, but across all of our subjects. Because, you know, I've come to thinking that, you know, we must, we must know enough now about learning and teaching. We must be able to work as a society to do this. We have all this technology. If we can put a man on the moon, and that was 50 years ago, surely to goodness, we can be successful with every one of our students, because, you know, it's not low rocket science. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
You see what I mean? These folks are inspirational. And so now it's my great pleasure to introduce you to Marion County's newest Rookie Teacher of the Year, Elizabeth Rocky. And Mrs. King, I know you served on the Rookie Selection Committee this year, and you got to meet Elizabeth and see her in action, and so I know that that was inspirational to you as well. So not all counties have a Rookie Teacher of the Year. This is something that we do here in Marion County because we believe it's important to celebrate and to honor and to motivate our newest teachers. And so we are proud to be able to do that. When we say someone is a rookie teacher for the selection purposes of Golden Apple, it is a teacher that has been teaching for three years or less. Elizabeth Rocky is a third grade inclusion teacher at Saddlewood Elementary School. She has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree, both from the University of Florida. And I read through her portfolio this afternoon where she said, "I believe in providing a warm and welcoming environment where students, families, teachers, and community members come together to share in the education of all learners." All learners means all learners. If I've learned that teaching chemistry without practical application is practically useless, I've learned that Elizabeth believes all learners is all learners. She says, "My job is my joy, and my joy is to celebrate individual differences, diagnose exceptionalities, neurodiversity, and plan instruction that meets the needs of all." And Elizabeth certainly exemplifies what is going right with Marion County public schools and what is going right in our classrooms. And so it is my honor to introduce you to Ms. Elizabeth Rocky.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to share some inspiration and a second pledge to our nation. I ended up writing a poem here about why I show up to school every day, and so if you'll bear with me a little bit, there's a little bit of rhyming, which you of course need to read and engage students, so here we go. "We're here tonight to go about business, to keep schools turning. But what good is that without teachers teaching, students learning? We're here to celebrate students, keep the arts in schools, approve budgets, delegate funds, improve graduation rates for students with exceptionalities? Phew, full stop, you have a busy job. But let me be clear, I'm here for the kids, for all kids, always. I show up to school to love, go beyond and above. I'm here for the kids, not the money or the fame. I'm here for the kids, not the paycheck or this name. I'm here as an advocate, educator, and incluter to no end. I wouldn't be here without the support of family and friend. 2014 Senior Scholarship from the Education Foundation honored now as 2020 Rookie Teacher of the Year to a standing ovation." So tonight, while I'm here, let me be clear, I'm here for the kids. I will not take a vacation from being here for the kids. It's not just a saying or phrase, even though I am wearing it. I am not alone. You can see other students wearing their declaration just the same, as they work spending time and dime helping students up their game. Are you here for the kids? Are student-centered family and community voices heard? Pursuing justice, seeking excellence, ensuring equity, that's a verb. Your decision affects students' daily living. Policies get personal when they're about people close to us, especially when their sons, daughters, grandkids, near and dear to us. Our job is building leaders, empowering a workforce, seeking peace, as soon, they won't just be kids, but citizens in these seats. So for tonight, just for tonight, I ask you to reflect and decide, when you're asked to be a voice for kids, will you provide? I don't know about you, what you're here for, but I'm sure and certain, my fellow educators too, that I'm here for the kids. What about you?"
Good.
Thank you for letting me share. If we could go ahead and stand and begin the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Well, ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, our Golden Apple Selection Committee this year picked two very fine representatives to represent you, our 7,000 employees, and our more than 43,000 students. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to bring them to you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't let them go, ladies. Don't. Don't let them go. I know we've said it before, but congratulations again on being the Rookie Teacher of the Year, Mr. Hunter, being the Golden Apple Teacher of the Year for Marion County. What you do on a daily basis can never be taken for granted. You guys are on the front line, and we truly appreciate what you do. It shows because you are recognized for it, but we also thank all of the teachers of Marion County for what they do on a daily basis, and sometimes it's never recognized, but we appreciate it.
I just want to say quickly to you, and there's going to be
Can I get a copy of the poem?
Probably all of us that want to say something to you. You're both amazing, you're both inspiring. How fortunate as well for you to have the opportunity for the next year to share your message to so many people in so many places. And personally, you've both already inspired me. I mean, I've been, that's been my life growing through my career as working with the kids that may not always be the easiest to love, but need to love the most. So thank you for continuing to carry the torch. And Mr. Hunter, I've been to three springs since I signed this, and I think I sent you pictures of a couple of them. But that's what teachers are all about, in being inspiring, and you certainly both exemplify that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback and echo what they say also. You guys are very inspiring, and I'm very appreciative, and I'm grateful that not only are you looking after Vanguard High School, but you're looking for other schools too, and all children, as Ms. Rocky said. And Ms. Rocky, you are kind of near and dear to my heart, and you probably don't realize this, but I was a third grade teacher at Saddlewood. I love third grade students. And so when I walked into your class, you probably thought I was never going to leave because I stayed there a long time, and I saw the, in the hanging out. I did hang out, but I did notice, like, when I came in, you had your chants and your procedures, and your students were on task, and even when, right before lunch, like, every minute, she even had where you had planned, which she talked about. She had tape on the ground, and students had to measure and come together and stuff before they could actually leave. And it was just, you're pretty spectacular, I saw that firsthand, so, and thank you both for all you do.
Congratulations. You are an inspiration, both of you. Thank you again. I echo everything they've said, and we are thrilled and honored to have you teaching in Marion County public schools. Thank you.
And I would like to say, I didn't come from the education world, I came from the business world, so I receive inspiration just to my left, from everyone to my left here, that are teachers and have education degrees. All I had for an experience as far as education goes was what I heard from my family. And I have three college graduate children of my own, and I can tell you, to this day, I've got one turning 39, and they go down from there a little bit, and you know who they talk about through their education? You know, they all, like, college was just yesterday to them. They may have one college teacher they talk about, but you know who they talk about? Their K-12 teachers. It's like the college teachers, the college professors didn't happen because they got their grounding in K-12, and they still will talk about certain teachers and what Mr. so-and-so did, or what Mrs. so-and-so did, that was so funny, and those are the memories that they have. I don't know where the mental block is for their college, because it's like they didn't even really have teachers. But they remember, they remember you guys. And so you're, you're building the foundation that the universities, if it weren't for you, wouldn't need them. So thank you for all you do, and you're the guys that the kids will remember when they're my age, their K-12 teachers. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Very much. Thank you.
Dr. Mayor?
I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 25th, 2020 school board meeting with materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Thrower. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Proven unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 14th, 2020 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? They're being done? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 28th, 2020 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Call. Ms. McCall, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? They're being done? All in favor, seated five by aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Mr. Ken McAtier, Director of Secondary Education, would you like to recognize Marion County Sunshine State Scholars Winners?
Good evening. We are so excited to be here tonight to represent seven young folks from our high schools for their excellence in science and mathematics. And I'm going to turn this over to our program specialist for math, grade six to 12, Christine Strickler, and she's going to walk us through.
Good evening, Chair Cummings, board members, and Superintendent Mayor. The Sunshine State Scholars Program was initiated in 1998 and is designed to recognize high school students who excel in mathematics and science. Earlier in this school year, each of our high schools was asked to nominate an outstanding junior in mathematics and science. Each nominee was required to complete an application packet, which included an essay. A district committee reviewed each application and selected two winners to represent Marion County. The selection process involved judging the nominees on their academic achievement in mathematics and science, advanced coursework, community service, participation in STEM competitions, and their thoughtful response on the essay. Selecting two winners was extremely difficult due to the outstanding quality of all of these nominees. On May 25th through 29th, Marion County's top two winners will join other district scholars from across the state as they engage in academic competition and are recognized for their outstanding achievement at Florida Department of Education-sponsored recognition event in Orlando. We will now recognize the Sunshine State Scholar candidates that were selected by their campuses. So we have Mackenzie Brewer from Bellevue High School, who is unable to join us this evening. We have Sidney Glennon from Lake Weir High School. Alana Williams from North Marion High School. Emily Lowman from Westport High School. Gugu Latu Sugogo from Dunellen High School is the district alternate for the state event. The two scholars that will continue on to represent Marion County public schools at the state competition are Andy Sharr from Vanguard High School and Peekaboo Lesch from Forest High School, who is unable to join us this evening. We are proud of each of these students and all they have accomplished.
Parents and principals, if you want to get pictures, go right ahead.
Everybody has a camera nowadays.
Oh, yes. You have a phone, you have a camera.
And you don't have to develop the film.
Don't have to.
I know, it's amazing.
You want to turn around and face the board and show?
Face the board.
Oh my goodness, congratulations. I just think it's awesome when you excel in science and math, because that was not really my subjects, and I always, always was in awe of people that did that. And so congratulations. And moms and dads that are out there, bravo.
Yes.
You know that these kids are where they are because of you, so, so thank you very much, and congratulations. I hope that when you graduate from college, that you'll consider coming back to Marion County and making it and working in Marion County.
Well, I have to say congratulations to every one of you, but there is the third grade teacher in me that has a third, well, she grew up. I recognize you by your name. And Emily Lowman was my third grade student, and I'm just so proud of you and each and every one of you, so congratulations.
Yes, and there are so many opportunities available in school, the years that you're in school, and it's clear that you are availing yourselves of the academic opportunities and rigor that we have there for you. So congratulations for doing that and for having that focus. And we look forward to great things from all of you come back and see us from time to time. Let us know what you're up to. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. They've said everything. They have said it all. Keep, keep, keep striving, keep pushing forward, and good luck to the two that's going to be going to the next level, and our district alternate, just in case. We know that you guys are going to represent Marion County well, so, good job. Good job. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Ms. Christine Strickler, Secondary Math Program Specialist, would like to recognize the winner of the 2020 Forest Chapter of the Florida Engineering Society Math Counts
Good evening again, Chairman Cummings, school board members, and Dr. Mayor. Thank you for having us to recognize more amazing students this evening. On Saturday, February 15th, dozens of middle school students from Marion County converged at Forest High School to participate in our regional math counts competition. The Florida chapter, the Forest Chapter of the Florida Engineering Society sponsors math counts, and Tillman and Associates Engineering do an amazing job working with us to coordinate this all-day event. The object of this competition is to solve math equations and word problems quickly and accurately. The math counts competition consists of five timed rounds. There's an individual sprint round without calculators, the individual target round with calculators, the team round, the fast-paced oral competition called a cipher match, which is pretty amazing how fast these kids are answering questions. And then our countdown round, which ranks the top 10 finalists in the oral competition. Teams from Bellevue, Dunellen, Fort King, Howard, Liberty, Lake Weir, North Marion, and Osceola Middle Schools, Fort McCoy, and Horizon Academy Combination Schools, and Blessed Trinity participated in this year's event. The top 10 individuals, the top cipher team, and the top two overall teams each received awards at the event. The top two overall teams will move on to represent Marion County at the state competition held in Orlando on March 20th. It is time to meet these amazing students and their coaches. We'll start with the top 10. So in 10th place is Andrew Raleigh from Howard Middle School. In ninth place is Lillou V. Lorenz from North Marion Middle School. In seventh place is Debbie Sharma from Howard Middle School. In sixth place is Divya Nadur from Howard Middle School. In fifth place is Jordan Nakobi from Howard Middle School. In fourth place is Kristoff Tank from North Marion Middle School. In third place, Gabriel Rebey from Howard Middle School. And in second place, Camille Duma from Howard Middle School. Our first place winner is Ifyulua Olaronglogbon from Howard Middle School. Let's give these students a round of applause.
Just slide them to the corner, just slide them over a little bit more, yeah.
Keep smiling.
Big smiles, lots of teeth.
All right, then this, this year's top cipher team from Marion County is from Osceola Middle School. The team members are Cole Campbell, Jaden Tay, Cade Walton, and Xavier Sag Paul with Ms. Stacy Campbell. The second, okay, the second place overall team from Marion County is from North Marion Middle School. So the team members, and we're going to have them step forward, because the two that are here are also in our top 10, so Kristoff Tank, Lillou V. Lorenz, Braden Hawk, and Marley Bennett, and this team is coached by Dr. Mark Lockley. This year's first place overall team from Marion County is from Howard Middle School. The team members are Ifyulua Olaronglogbon, Camille Duma, Gabriel Rebey, and Jordan Nakobi, with Pam Ernest as our coach. We wish all the advancing students and their coaches the best as they compete at the state math counts competition at the end of March. Let's give these students and their families a random applause. Let's give these students and their families a round of applause.
Thanks to see you Nancy, give me a hug.
Congratulations, boys and girls. It's amazing. Keep doing what you're doing and you will go incredibly far. And to those of you that will be going to competition, good luck to you. We're very proud to have you in our school system. Moms and dads, thank you because we know that one of the biggest reasons they are here is because of your support, so thank you.
Congratulations. It's just wonderful, I mean, math and, and more math. You guys are exceptional. And also, thank you to your parents, but also thank you for your teachers that have took time and followed through with that with you guys, so congratulations.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations. And it sounds like the competition was a lot of fun.
It was.
Yeah.
Look at their faces.
Yes. Yeah, so not only are you doing academic, you know, really high-level stuff, but it's also fun and enjoyable and that's really wonderful. That's really wonderful when you can have fun doing something that you're so good at naturally. So, congratulations.
You know, I, I sit here and I see all these mathematicians and it's just amazing. That's not a world that many of us understand, to count myself. And, but I know how fortunate you are to have your coaches. I've known Pam, we grew up together basically as moms. Madison Street Moms. And, and I know she's got a lot of children and I know she went on from raising her wonderful children onto helping so many more children. She was just born to be a mom and a teacher. She was always teaching her own. And how fortunate we are to have coaches for you students. And I want you to thank them all the time because sometimes we don't understand gratitude, that in, in our schools, we get caught up in so many other things, passing FSA, but gratitude is the number one virtue in life and be thankful for the people that help you, your parents, your family, your friends that you're close to, and your teachers, okay?
And I want to actually add something. I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do. I just want to let you know that, okay? And Dr. Heidi, a special thank you to you. We gave her our Math Counts first place trophy. And again, thank you for your leadership and I wish each, and aren't you retiring to spend more time with grandbabies? Okay. I wish each and every one of you the best because like, to me, and I tell Mr. Lambert every day, every day's a gift. That's why it's called the present. And kids, remember that, okay? Every day you wake up and you're alive is a gift. So, please remember that. Okay, I'm done being the mother now.
Thank you, they knew you.
You're welcome.
Enough saying. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Love you.
Love you too.
May I have a motion to adopt proclamation recognizing the month of March to be Arts in Our Schools Month?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thore, seconded by Ms. McColl. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign. Ms. Kevin Christian, question, Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Director, and Ms. Joanne Crowder, Fine Arts Program Specialist. Please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Good evening Board Chair, Reverend Cummings, Vice Chair Mrs. Thrower, Mrs. King, Mrs. McColl, Mrs. Stacy, Superintendent Dr. Mayor, Ms. Elena, and, hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. I would like to introduce some of my rock star teachers behind me. This is Mrs. Brooke Hutto. She is at Harborview Elementary. She's the president of the Marion All County, Marion County Music Association. We have so many acronyms, it's hard to keep them straight. She is in charge of Charlie Dixon and the Elementary Honor Choir, and she helps run the elementary professional development, development, I said that correctly. Ms. Sandra Collins, she serves for the Florida Music Educator Association on the Advocacy Board and the Awards Committee. And she is also taking her students to Disney again this year, which is very exciting for us.
She's at Shady Hill, right?
She is at Shady Hill, yes, yes. And then also from Shady Hill, come on over here so they can see you. This is Mrs. Carla Cavalier, and she was our Rookie Teacher of the Year last year. And she is running professional development tomorrow for our elementary art teacher. She's going to be sharing her teaching method, Teaching for Artistic Behaviors. So, thank you for coming this evening and we're very excited to have our proclamation read. We're very excited for March. To my left.
This proclamation reads, and I'm a fellow musician, so I appreciate this as well. This proclamation reads, whereas the study of the fine arts contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, creativity, creative problem-solving, and critical thinking abilities, whereas the study of fine arts gives students a deeper understanding of community and multicultural values and beliefs, promoting personal growth, whereas the inclusion of instruction in all of the arts significantly enhances the morale and quality of the school environment and teacher sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities, whereas it is the stated objective of the Marion County Public School System to prepare children for a productive role in our society, and arts education is a viable factor in the total education curricula that develops citizens into a global society. Whereas the National Association for Music Education, the National Art Education Association, the American Allegiance for Theater and Education, and the National Dance Education Organization have all designated March as Arts in Our Schools Month. And whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida endorses the observance of Arts in Our Schools Month in grades K through 12 as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of education in the arts, and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida recognizes the month of March 2020 to be Fine Arts in Our Schools Month, and it's dated today and signed by each of you. So, on behalf of the superintendent of the board, I present that to you, and I know you'll share that with these teachers and so many more.
Yes.
Rock stars.
Well, you know how I feel about it. And I'm fortunate to serve on the Florida Music.
Educator Association.
Well, not the Educator Association. Supervisors Association for the Florida School Board Association. And, and I'm always thrilled to be at those meetings and learn everything that's going on in our schools. And you three are just, you really are rock stars. And Ms. Collins, I really miss not having a grandchild at Shady Hill. But, but thank you all because we all know that music in the arts is so, so important to our kids, and so thank you for what you do.
And so important at, at every level, you know. Ms. Collins, when, when your students perform at the Golden Apple Gala, it's incredible and the kids just kept on coming out. And I was hoping that the stage was going to be full enough and, or big enough to be able to, to accommodate everyone and, and just the whole visual, the singing, everything was just fantastic. And we're so blessed to have designated art at Hillcrest School now. We have VSA, Very Special Arts, I think, coming up this weekend at the Appleton. So, just all across our, our school system, the arts are definitely alive, well, and thriving. Yes, thank you for our funding referendum too. Thank you to the community for supporting the arts.
And Ms. Crowder for actually, I mean.
Yes, for coordinating it all.
You have done so much to coordinate all these arts in our schools, so we greatly appreciate it.
You guys do way more than people know that you do for the arts, so I thank you guys truly, truly.
We'll see you at Charlie Dixon very soon. You'll have your tickets.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Thank you guys. I'll now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting and the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying reference to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention.
How many speakers do we have?
We have four.
Mr. McCollum, 9686 North Langdon Road, Citrus Springs, Florida. I'd like to certainly reflect for two seconds on what I just saw. How awesome is that? Celebrations of teaching and learning and the pursuit of academic excellence. It is, it is wonderful. And you guys do a wonderful job at it and those kids are pumped about learning and that's a great thing. I'm here to speak briefly on a, on a meeting I had Monday. To talk about that, I, I need to go back to December 16th. And through no responsibility of anyone in this, sitting up there, a school closed. And that school closed for reasons that don't have anything to do with the county board or education. And kids were hurting and parents were hurting. And you listened. And we had a meeting on December 23rd and you made a statement and you followed that statement. The wheels don't turn fast, they never do when you try to do things right. It takes thoughtfulness, it takes working, it takes listening. These are big responsibilities. And I want to appreciate each board member who has been in contact with me during that time. I want to appreciate a superintendent who guided a process where we didn't let students fail. And so, Monday, we had a meeting that I was invited to that, that included the superintendent, the board chair, Dr. Vianello, who heads up the Career Technical Education Program, and Mr. McAtteer, who I believe is in charge of curriculum and assessment. And in that meeting, we once again focused on a need for a group of kids and some very caring parents who have advocated to continue having opportunity. And the result of that meeting was an agreement that we would work together to establish a military choice academy that is self-contained on a campus. And I could not be more excited about the potential for that. I can't be more clear that it's because of commitment. I listened to your mission before we started and you guys represent that mission very well and the county is fortunate. But as we begin this process, I have been offered the opportunity to serve as a consultant to develop this program along with the leadership that I have mentioned. And I need to say that humbly, I'm very thankful for the privilege of doing this. I look forward to doing it because it meets your mission, serving kids and ensuring kids can make it. Also want to recognize parents for their, their constant commitment. This is, this is what, this is what excellence can look like when we're all on the same page. When that happens, great things happen, so I'm not going to take up more than the three minutes. I think I've been allotted so far, I got two to go. But thank you so much and I look forward to working with you over the next time to get this thing established and honestly, make it something that's about the pursuit of academic excellence through military discipline and the development of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Bruce Hart?
I'm Bruce Hart, 5405 Southwest 82nd Lane, Ocala, 34476 H A R T. Don't know if you all remember me, I was here back on December the 11th to discuss the background check issue that I'm having. I've volunteered with my son's class for six years straight. This year, suddenly, nope, can't do it. Been sober for many, many years, had a substance abuse issue many, many years ago, all that's cleared up. Haven't had any issues in my life. Got another friend of mine, over 20 years, he's been sober. He was declined also for the background check for something that happened when he was 19. Another lady that I met, she's a teacher. She was declined to be a volunteer. But of course, she teaches in the classroom. So, I think that there's some sort of a policy issue there. When I was here last, I was promised that somebody would get with me, they haven't. I was promised that they, people would look into it and it's two and a half months later, two and a half months more of my son going to school and me not being able to volunteer, do the things that I'd like to do as a father, that I've been doing for, since he was in kindergarten in the Marion County School System. He's now in 7th grade. So, I'd like to, I've called, no one, no one returns my calls, and I'd like to get some sort of an answer. I know you probably don't have anything right now.
What school?
Liberty Middle School.
I'm going to have you tonight get with Mr. McFadden and do an application tonight.
Okay.
See what we can do.
I really appreciate that very much.
He should be out in the hallway.
I don't know who he is.
Oh, there he is. He's back there, okay. No, Mr. McFadden, can you make sure that?
The guy with the gun?
That's the one.
One of them.
I may know you from back in the day. At any rate, thank you very much. I really appreciate you listening.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Amber Gibbs?
Hello, I'm Amber Gibbs, 2040 Northeast 115th Terrace, Silver Springs, Florida, 34488. Since December 15th, I felt like I've been on a roller coaster ride and I wish I could say it's been fun. When MMA doors closed that day, it felt like someone died. More than anything, it broke my heart to see the cadets and the parents struggling. I've cried, I've lost sleep, I've lost patience, and attended numerous meetings, all while trying to be a parent and a wife and attending a school myself. I've made some good friends along the way and I've had a chance to meet all of you and I'm very appreciative for that. I'm sorry, I lost my place. But now, for the first time in two months, I feel like I can breathe. Now it's time for thank you. Thank you to the School Board and the Superintendent for listening to us and acting in the best interests of the students and the future students. Thank you to Mr. McCollum and Command Sergeant Major George for never leaving our sides. They have shown us how much they truly care for these cadets. Thank you to my friends who have tirelessly and selflessly fought for all the cadets and not just their own. And thank you to the parents and cadets who had the faith to hang in there. I look forward to the future of a new military academy that will be sure to benefit many other students as it did for ours, and I thank you very much.
Ms. April Larson? You're good?
You sure? As you spoke every other- Because you spoke every other week.
I'm sure I can find nothing to say, but I think Amber covered that. Thank you guys for hearing us, not just listening.
You signed the form. You're committed.
Sorry. Unfortunately, all the stress of the last few months has finally caught up with me, and this flu going around has got a hold. We did want to thank you for not, like I said, not just hearing what we said, but listening to what we said, that what these kids really needed to be successful, because they haven't been in regular school. So we're just very grateful that we're finally seeing some forward movement. We're just here in a show of force because we don't want you guys to think we're resting on our laurels and that we're not going to be here every step of the way to help you guys push this forward. So to reiterate why Amber said, thank you all for all the hard work, all the communication, and we just ask that please keep that communication going with us forward because it will help us keep the kids on track and keep the stress levels down and hopefully the behavior in check.
Let me say this to all of you. From day one, we heard you. From day one, we were listening. From day one, we were working, all of us. Were faithfully working, trying to resolve this situation. It was terrible. It is terrible. I won't say it was. It is terrible, what has happened to be displaced. However, we're not going to stop until we get something done. This board, the superintendent, we have worked tirelessly to get the right fit. And I thank Mr. McCollum for the meeting yesterday, for the conversation. And in the next few weeks, you're going to be hearing some other things that's going to come out that's going to be for this Military Academy, Choice Academy, that's going to go beyond the expectations that we set out initially. We came into a situation in December where it was the emergency situation, and the first thing we had to do was stop the bleeding. And it's taken us a while to get all of that cleaned up, and now the healing can start, and we can move forward. So keep working with us. I promise you, I promise you, every person up here heard you and listened and was working on it. It just made, as Mr. McCollum said, it doesn't, change doesn't happen really, really fast in certain things, especially in a situation like this. And it's unfortunate that it's the kids that had to deal with this. But we're going to get it right.
We appreciate it.
We're going to get it right. So thank you, guys. And Mr. McCollum, we look forward to working with you as well. I think we got something coming up in the work session.
Yes, the fifth.
And then on the fifth board members to get this thing going, but we need to get it going.
Good.
Let's get it going.
All right.
Reverend Cummins, I hear you talking about how hard we've worked, but I want to say how hard the parents have worked.
Yes.
These parents have lived and breathed this, that seemed like a tragedy, but it's not a travesty unless you let the tragedy remain, and we've done everything we can to reverse the tragedy and make it into something wonderful. But I want to say to y'all parents, we've heard you, but your persistence, your diligence, and I hope your children have watched you, and I hope they will watch this recording because you gotta, parents have to fight for their children, and your children will need to fight for your grandchildren one day. You parents are the ones that have made the difference. We have taken and used what we could, but had you not come to us with a request, like God says, ask and you shall receive, okay? You came and you asked, and you're receiving what you asked for because you pushed and you pushed, and you begged and you begged, and we heard your heart. And I want to thank Dr. Mayer. I want to thank Reverend Cummins has spent many, many hours talking with people the board has met. But honestly, you parents are the ones this school should be dedicated to. Your children and the parents of this class, this first class of the Military Academy is who this school should be dedicated to because had it not been for your diligence and your refusal to give up, this would not have happened. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Yep.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda, item C-8.1 through C-17.1?
Somewhere.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The 19.1, approve the installation of a new emergency generator at North Marion High School, project number 18-113, price proposal $32,707 from Allstate Construction Incorporated. I have a motion. On this, motion for discussion. Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. I mean, Ms. Thor. There's discussion on this one? Okay. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $61,640.55. $2,500 to Anthony Elementary School from their business partner, Golden Ocala Golf and Ecstasy Club via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Bellevue High School from their business partner, Advent Health Ocala via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,350 to Bellevue High School from Kiwanis Club of Ocala Incorporated. Baby grand piano valued at $6,000 to Bellevue High School from Bill and Pat Dolan. $550 tons of sand valued at $5,500 to Bellevue High School from Vulcan Materials Company. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from Bill and Anna Marie Smith. $2,500 to Bellevue Middle School from their business partner, Dr. Jones Orthodontics via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,000 to Lake Ware High School from Hires Backley Funeral Service. $1,350 to Lake Ware High School from Kiwanis Club of Ocala. $2,546.88 to Forest High School from Forest High School's Athletic Boosters Inc. $2,193.67 to Forest High School from Forest High School Athletic Boosters Inc. $2,500 to Madison Street Elementary School from their business partner, Dr. Jones Orthodontics via the Public Education of Marion County. $7,000 to Marion County Public Schools Public Relations Department from Cox Cable. Goose neck horse trailer valued at $4,000 to North Marion Middle School from St. John's River Water Management District. $7,500 to Osceola Middle School from Osceola Middle School PTO. $2,500 to Osceola Middle School from Duke Energy. $2,500 to Romeo Elementary School from their business partner, the Colen Foundation via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Advent Health Ocala via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,350 to Vanguard High School from Kiwanis Club of Ocala Inc. $2,000 to Vanguard High School from the India Association Cultural Educational Center of North Central Florida Inc. And $1,350 to Westport High School from Kiwanis Club of Ocala, Inc. May I have a motion?
Somewhere.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ms. Stacy, can you give us our thank you?
The economy's improving. Our contributions are increasing, and I want to thank everyone for their kind sharing of what they have that is so valuable to our schools that maybe they don't have a use for a horse trailer anymore, but they know that our high school does have a reason for it, a need for it. And so thank you so much for the big things and the little things that we give because it's, you're giving from your heart, you're giving to people that you know need what you have. And thank you so much because if it weren't for you guys, a lot of the students wouldn't have some of the extras that they have in our schools. So we thank you.
Thank you.
I'm interested in the 550 tons of sand.
Volleyball courts for Bellevue High School.
All right.
It was really nice. I went to the room.
Very, very cool.
The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for March 5th, 2020, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss new charter school application review, district staffing plan, the 104, health insurance, health insurance status review, African-American exemplary status, renaming of Westport High School Stadium, Danellan High School softball field, school security cost update, and military choice option update. Four attorney-client sessions to follow. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for April 9th, 2020, at 9 o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss annual review of alternative learning codes to the conduct, district staffing plan, 204 and audit presentation, 2018, 2019, with Purvis and Gray. Auditors Allison L. Stone and Tim Westgate. Reports. Dr. Mayer?
Awesome. Would you like to recognize Boy Scout first?
Yes. We have some, damn, the Boy Scouts here?
One.
One Boy Scout?
Two.
The form, please.
Two. Well, technically, three, then. Come on up. Come on up.
John Bonner.
John Bonner, First Presbyterian Church?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're recognizing him for, what is this? I can't see. Citizenship in the Community.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Boehner, we are appreciative of what you're doing in the community, and thank you for doing it. Did you do some type of service project? Did you do some type of project or something?
Project. Oh, no, this is for my merit badge for, it's a...
Okay. Tell us about it.
It's, in order to get Eagle Scout, you have to have 21 merit badges in total, and 13 of them have to be Eagle Required, and this is Citizenship in the Community merit badge, and that is an Eagle Required badge. So in part, and the requirement for that badge is to attend a meeting of our city council or the school board meeting, so I chose school board meeting. And I'm listening for a topic specifically, and I have to talk to my counselor about it, and what I thought was interesting, what I thought was unnecessary, necessary.
What did you find was unnecessary?
Well, we haven't...
Get with me after the meeting.
We haven't got to the topic yet, so.
Okay. 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 Well, thank you so much for choosing us, this board to observe. I'm sure that we did things decently and in order so that you can get your badge, and we look, hope that you'll get that badge very soon, so.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Are you all cooking tonight?
No.
Not tonight? Okay. Because usually when we leave, there's that wonderful barbecue.
Aroma.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Officer Ocaseo, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you very much. And thank, yeah, just know that we carry you and all of your colleagues at our parts every day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So this week, because this is Tuesday, yes, yesterday, I got a, I said, Ms. Green, we said earlier, it's...
It was like Monday.
It does, doesn't it? Okay. So I got a phone call from a gentleman who said he was a reporter for the New York Times, and he was asking why Marion County is not teaching African-American history anymore. It's exactly, exactly. I laughed, and I said, oh, hold on. And so we had a very long, engaging conversation and great talk, and I told him about our work session coming up when Dr. Coggins will be here to update all of us on our pursuit of exemplary status. And so he was very interested in that as well. So hopefully, he'll either tune in or show up. So we had that invite. And just a reminder to everybody that that is coming up March 4th, 5th?
5th.
5th. March 5th, Thursday, our very next work session. And Dr. Coggins will be doing an in-depth update on that. And thanks to Lindsay Barber and Dossie Eller, the program specialists, that are leading that charge. Fascinating. We're looking forward to moving forward quickly and with fidelity on this tremendous, oh my gosh, so excited, just so excited. We are also working with the folks from Reefs Across America to have them come here to visit us. Mr. Queeney from Reefs Across America contacted us and wanted to come for a few dates, but they were over spring break. So in communication with him, we believe that we can get him here on March 13th. We're ironing out those details, but he will be here with his, all I can describe is it's a multimedia van trailer where the students will come through. They will learn the history of Reefs Across America, the importance of this, in another honor to our veterans. So while we are in process, we just have the date, but we're working with the area directors to choose a location and to maximize this one-day visit from him. And we look forward to having him back if we can and participating further with Reefs Across America. This week, don't forget, is our, continues our Southeastern Youth Fair. Every day, there is something happening, all the time. We had, I posted the calendar. We have the steer show. We had the steer show. We have the swine show coming up, and that's always, always a fun time as well. And just don't forget, just stop out because it's free. You can visit all the different booths and events and support our kids, and that's always a great thing to do. So lots happening, lots to celebrate, just looking forward to moving on with great things. So thank you.
Dr. Mayer?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
I'd just like to say, we have a lot of great things going on here. I really appreciate the board. We read something at the first of each meeting that we put a lot of thought into. And I was looking through it as the parents were speaking a few minutes ago, and guys, we're fulfilling it. We're doing exactly what we wanted to do as a group. And I want to thank the board members for taking our pledge and our motto seriously because, and the superintendent was in on this development of this, and there's just, there's so many, we come here at night, on Tuesday nights, and we see what's going on in our district, and there really are a lot of great things going on. And I'd like to thank everyone for all their involvement, and the teachers and everybody out there that takes part in all this. I mean, even like Dr. Mayer going out to the Southeastern Show and seeing the kids. This all takes time, and our leaders and board members and superintendent and everyone they spend, and our public relations, head of our public relations, there's just a lot of time that people spend going in and the support after hours that a lot of people don't know about. So I want to thank you guys for all you do, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Just a couple of things. I had the pleasure of going out on Friday morning. It was bitter cold to the Bellevue Beach volleyball ribbon court ribbon...
So you know where the sand came from.
Ribbon cutting. You know, it really is exciting that we can expand our volleyball program into beach volleyball now. Lindsay Seek, who is the women's basketball coach there, actually grew up with my kids, and she and my son are the same age, and she's doing remarkable things there. Their athletic director, John Small, another graft, and it really, it was very, very cold, but it was really a great morning, and we looked for great things for those kids. And it truly is, that sand was brought in, and there are volleyball courts on top of the sand, so. I also want to give a shout out to Junior League of Ocala. I'm not sure how many know, but they have partnered with Oak Crest and Evergreen. They're not only volunteering, but they're providing resources so that they can have books for all their children, attendance tags. They have some other great things in mind for Evergreen, so more to come on that. But not only that, but I took them out to meet with Emerald Shores this week, and they want to partner with Emerald Shores. And Ms. Houston is so excited, and it is truly a service club that is serving and wants to make a difference in the lives of our children. So Junior League of Ocala, I am very proud to be a sustainer of your organization, and I'm very thrilled that you want to take one more of our schools. Thank you.
Ms. King?
I'm good this evening. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Thor?
Yes, I do have a few things. The first one is we approved tonight on the consent agenda, it was item 10.6, and it was warehouse school supplies, $375,000. and it was warehouse school supplies, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars were so. So, that caught my eye, and I thought, I'm gonna look into this a little bit, because that's a whole lot of pencils, you know? And I had the pleasure of speaking with Amanda Bray over at the warehouse, and I think she's been doing it for twenty-six years. Amelia, I'm sorry, Amelia Bray. I had Amelia written down. Why did I say Amanda? But anyway, Amelia, she was wonderful. She answered all of my questions. And I learned a lot about inventory control and all of the conservative measures that the school system takes to make sure that the basic supplies that any school would need are available and they're monitored. So, it made me feel a lot more comfortable with keeping this item on the consent agenda. So, I just wanted to give a little shout out to Amelia. She invited me to visit the warehouse someday, and I'm interested in things like that. So, Amelia, I'll probably be seeing you soon. And then it led me to think about when there are this quantity of supplies available. We want to make sure that teachers, that they get to the teachers. So, I did ask about that process because in partnership with the Public Education Foundation and Tools for Teachers and the central warehouse, hopefully, teachers are hearing that there are lots of opportunities for them to get supplies so that they don't have to reach into their own pockets quite so much. So, I hope that this information has been useful to any teacher especially that's listening in tonight. The second thing I have on my mind is I was able to attend one of our first truancy court hearings over last week. And we met as a group with Judge Robbins before school started. Attorney Green, you were there. David Ellers, April Adams from Social Work Services, who really spearheads attendance and truancy issues with families. There were so, four social work, no, two social work assistants there. And the social work assistant that I spoke to, she serves four schools. And that is a lot of kids to be trying to help problem solve. So, I'm really glad that we have that mental health appropriation and that we are turning our attention. School hardening is important, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we have caring, trustworthy adults that are trained and skilled at the school level to help our kids. And it was clear to me, the dedication, because they had their eyes dotted, their t's crossed. Both of the cases, the judge signed off on immediately. And that's very important because that wasn't always the case. No one likes to have this happen. And a lot of times, what was happening was that the judge would give yet again, one more chance. And it has moved so far beyond that by the time it actually gets to the courthouse. And a lot of the community, I think, might not a hundred percent understand that whether a student comes to school or not, they still factor in to everything that has to do with school grade, with accountability. So, we have got to continue to reach out to our parents and guardians and caregivers to help them understand that even in kindergarten, being at school every single day is the best and safest place for your child to be. So, it was an eye-opener for me. It was the first time I'd ever been in court. So, I guess that's a good thing for a school board member to say. The last thing that's on my mind, and this is a quick handout for you all, because thank you to Kevin Christians for putting the survey out there for the evening work session and trying to get a sense from the public as to how they felt about it. And so, the results are there, but I will go ahead and give you the Reader's Digest version because it is on seven different pages. And we had over two hundred responses. And it was pretty clear when looking at the data that Tuesday or Thursday would be the preference for having an evening work session. I thought it was interesting that by far, the reason why the public has not attended work sessions is due to work conflicts. And everyone sitting in here knows that our work sessions are at nine AM in the morning, two times a month. So, what I have been thinking hard about and working towards is trying to get a work session with a targeted agenda that is geared towards what people in the community would want to know more about that we're working on. And so, clearly, there is interest. Again, Tuesday or Thursday seemed to be the preference. Five PM seemed to be the most convenient time. It was interesting because it was either five PM or six PM, but five thirty, no. So, I don't know what people are doing at five thirty versus five or six, but it came through quite clearly. And I was also thinking about our district staff, that they may likely prefer a five PM meeting rather than a six PM because it just then extends into the evening. Our work sessions can be very lengthy, so it would be very important to be mindful of everyone's time and also who we would be attracting to these meetings to ensure that our work session agenda, again, is, has items on it that would be of broad public interest. So, take your time to digest that. Those copies are for you, and I think I made enough for everyone. And then we can talk about a little bit more very shortly, but we do have a lot of important things coming up. And having the public involved, having the work sessions televised now has been a great step. And yet and still, there are many people that feel like they would like to be more participatory. And I think it's important to give them that opportunity to come before us because there's opportunity for public comment, too. And you can certainly yell at your TV, but we can't hear you. So, that means you need to show up. And I think those were my three things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, something else? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just a few things, just a few things. Let me start with the tough stuff, tough thing first. Parents, community, recently, we've had a rash of social media threats that have affected the school, school district as a whole. Parents, I know you get the messages from Mr. Christian, you know, telling us to make sure these kids are being responsible and making wise choices. This is totally unacceptable when people are going on social media and making threats just to disrupt the school day. And it happened during a time, a very sensitive time in our country where we were in memorial of the Parkland situation. We, you do know that there are consequences to your actions. So, parents, please remind the kids that there are consequences when they make these poor choices. But to make wise choices, to make good choices, what may seem like a joke, and what may have been a joke years ago is no longer a joke. It's a crime. And these crimes have punishments, and we can't go around the punishment. So, we want to make sure that that is put out there so that everyone know it. And parents, please, just have the conversations with your kid and with your children and let them know that these types of poor choices or poor decisions or things that they think are jokes hurt people, can get people hurt, and can really be something tragic. So, just please remind them of that. That's the tough stuff. The good things, I've had the pleasure within the past couple of weeks to see the compassion, the love, the genuine concern that this district has for our students and our staff. I've seen several different things that have happened where the school, school staff, the district staff have come together to go over and beyond. One in particular, the young lady that was missing from Hillcrest. To be out there, and it was cold that night. On Valentine's, that was Valentine's night, February fourteenth. And they stayed, and they worked, and they looked, and they drove their personal vehicles. They did whatever. They went through woods looking for this young lady. This district is really concerned about every student. There is not one student that they're not concerned about. And to see that outpouring of love that went out on that night, and to see Ms. Manresa, how emotionally drained she was in the process of us having that uncertainty of whether this child was. But then to see the relief on her face when she showed up. I wasn't gonna cry out there in front of you guys, but just when I got in the car, just, no, it was different. Because when a kid like that is missing, all kinds of things go through your mind. And, but I'm just grateful to God that we found her, that she was safe. And she was in great spirits.
She sure was glad to see us.
She was in great spirits. So, I'm thankful for everybody, Dr. Mayor, everyone. There were boots on the ground, and this wasn't just, you know, it was everybody that was there looking for the young lady. People were coming in that had sawed on social media. And this community is great about watching social media and responding when things are going on. So, I just want to tell everyone, thank you for that. So, and then my final good thing. Last Friday, I had the pleasure to, I wasn't at the volleyball. It was cold that day.
Ooh, it was cold.
I had an inside event.
Good timing.
I had an inside event. I went over to Marion Technical College. They had their District FBLA luncheon on last Friday. I want to give a real shout out to the kids that were there, that participate in FBLA Future Business Leaders of America, to Ms. Velvia Brown, who coordinated the event, to Mark Vianello, Mr. Kelly, they were all there. It was really a wonderful event to all of the business teachers that showed up there from the business, from the middle schools and the high schools. They were there. I hate to say that my alma mater did not win the little trivia bowl, but shout outs to Vanguard High School, FBLA. They did a awesome job, and it was really good. They represented. So, it was a good time, and they had Lee's Chicken, so it was good. It was good. It was good. It was good. So, but as Ms. Stacy said, this district is a unique district. We fight hard, but we love hard, too. And that's good. You have to fight for the rights of our kids, the rights of our teachers, our educators. And when things arise, we have to love hard. One sad note is, on Monday, I got a text from Dr. Mayor of a young man that's a Hillcrest student that transitioned over the weekend. And our prayers are with that family. Our prayers are with that school. I reached out to the school to let them know that we are, we're concerned about them. And anytime you lose a family member, it hurts, but we just want to let Hillcrest know that we feel their pain and the parents of that student. We feel their pain, so. Other than that, we just gotta keep plugging at MMA, not MMA, but the Military Academy. Stay tuned. Stay tuned for what's gonna come. I'm excited about what's coming down the road. I'm really excited about what's coming down the road. All right.
Dr. Mayor is about to jump out of her seat with excitement over there.
It is, it has been good to work on that, in that process, to see frowns get turned upside down.
Right.
It's been, it's been a long tedious process, but I want them to know that we're gonna have growing pains. We're gonna have growing pains, but we'll work through them. I'm sure that we'll work through them. All right? Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received alternative placement lists for students through February fourth, twenty twenty. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
We have two off air. Can Mr. Ellers clarify?
Sure.
One parent, to this point, has not come, the parent that was appealing the expulsions. I can go check one last time if you'd like.
J D one sixteen and one seventeen.
Yes.
But the other parent is here.
The other parent is here. Yes.
Okay. You go, Jay. May I have a motion to approve? Wait a minute, that's the same. Yeah. May I have a motion to approve this motion of student J D twenty-one-one-three E, J D twenty-one-one-four, and J D twenty dash one-two-six with educational services through the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the first semester of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Mr. Cummings, we're gonna hold off on that because if they're not out there, then we need to add them to this.
Yeah, they are not out.
They're not out there. So, please add J D twenty-one-sixteen and J D twenty-one-seventeen.
One sixteen.
And one seventeen, J D twenty. And we can vote on.
And those are with education. So, let me redo this. May I have a motion to approve this motion of student J D twenty-one-one-three E, J D twenty-one-one-four, J D twenty-one-two-six, J D twenty-one-one-six, and J D twenty-one-one-seven with educational services through the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the first semester of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall. Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor? My eye. Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve this motion of student J D twenty-one-twenty-five with online educational services through the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the first semester of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, seated by my eye.
Eye.
Unanimous. There are no one.
Right. So, now we'll just go to page twenty-two, second paragraph, sir.
I'll be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to discussing a student discipline matter. Parents will then have an opportunity to address the board. This is not a due process hearing. It is only an opportunity for parents to express their concerns prior to the board. Considering the superintendent's recommendation for expulsion, parents have had an opportunity to discuss the options available to them. If the student is expelled, the school board staff remains available to talk with the parents about alternative educational programs available for the expelled student. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. Meeting recessed at...
Mr. Cummings, just one quick, just for clarity purposes, on this student, this student is not expelled. Okay, so this is not really an expulsion. That was on there because we thought we were gonna have J D one sixteen and one seventeen, and that other parent would have come at the tail end of that script. So, this parent that we'll be speaking with is not expulsion.
Okay. This is a disciplinary matter.
It's a disciplinary matter.
Okay. So, this concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting recessed at six fifty-seven PM.